All right, it is that time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 2025 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who've never attended, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, the applicant will come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and discuss and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. Then we may have some questions for you. We'll go through all that and then the floor will be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project or variance. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony can be taken. After the public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. You're welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted. For those applicants who wish not to stay through the deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decisions. The zoning board of appeals is a five member board. Tonight, we have all five present and we've got a quorum. I will now call the role. Ms. Resonity. Mr. Matso. Ms. Mucci. Mr. Landers. And Mr. Donovan is present. Did you guys all get a chance to look at the meeting minutes from our last get together?
That was March 11th.
And it looks like it.
So yep, I will have us make a motion on March 11th meeting.
Okay, can I get a second, please? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And all right, we're quickly ahead of schedule, but I see the applicant for our first case is ready to start describing the project. So let me introduce that it's a Briand, Briad?
Right.
Briad Development LLC, 265 Court Street. Area variances for zero interior landscape islands where one island is required for every 10 parking spaces to allow parking areas between a principal building and public right of way and maximum pole sign area of 312 square feet or 50 square feet is the maximum. And pole height of 40 feet from grade where 25 is the maximum allowed in the C1 service commercial district. Welcome and the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Camp. And Kotel, representing the applicant. Here with me, Jim Tellerico, President of Restaurant and Retail Development. Put on.
It's cutting out.
Were you able to get all that? Yep. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're in front of you tonight for an application for a convenience gas store with two QSRs, quick service restaurants with a dual drive through, requesting relief from the following regulations. We have two, one monument sign, one pylon sign that exceed the maximum area 50 square feet. We're proposing 312 square feet. The, we have one sign that has a maximum height of 25 feet from grade. We're proposing 40 feet on one of the signs. We have an interior landscaping island relief request where we would need to provide, I believe it's three or four landscaping islands for the property. We're requesting to have none. And in the parking areas that is parking areas between a principal building and the public right of way is not permitted. We're requesting relief of seven parking spaces that are located at the corner of Court and Liberty Street. So those are our relief requests that we're asking for. Would you rather me go through one by one, the request for the relief, or do we want to just have an open discussion about it? I'm, I'm open either way.
Open discussion, we'll have questions. Do you have a preference?
Open discussion is fine.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do. Why are we looking for 40 feet in height on the sign?
It's a great question. The, the pylon sign you're talking about is located on Liberty Street. Which is our main access point. We've done some updating to our ingress and egress portions of the application based on DOT access and what we're permitted. That 40 foot pylon is to give wave finding for people that are becoming off the state highway of 363 and coming down the on-ramp. So that it gives them the ability to see from coming planned south to hit that exit ramp, the approximate letter heights of those those different sign panels, which I'll show you in one second, range anywhere from 15 to 32 inches, which is pretty standard in height. The average viewing time off of that road. Which critical for proper wave finding is approximately nine to 13 seconds based upon that. And that's how we designed that sign and requested that relief. Now, while it's 312 square feet, do you realize that we have three tenants that are located there? Of which one is Circle K, that sign is approximately 75 square feet. The Wendy's is 75 square feet approximately, and the Jimmy John's is 72. With the additional state standard requirement where you're allowed to have the proper visibility for gas pricing at 90 square feet. So that's basically how we're presenting the multiple, there's multiple tenants that are on this. It's not just
I understand that and you know, I don't care about the square footage as much as I do the height because there isn't a sign in the city of Bampton that's 40 feet. Except for the billboards and they're right off the state highway area. And I think where that sign's going in that corner, I think it's just out of proportion for that area. That's my opinion. And I'm all for signs. You guys know that.
I understand that. If we weren't on it, if there wasn't, if that wasn't an elevated state highway, I don't think we'd be proposing that height either. That's one of the reasons why we picked that height to begin with. You know, because from a visibility standpoint, the elevated highway that's there is approximately 27 feet from ground level.
Once I'm, once we allow something like this, it's going to have to happen through the city quite a bit. That's my situation I'm seeing with it.
Somewhat unique in terms of its location. Right next to the elevated highway. And also just for a point of clarification, this third sign is removed from the package. So because the entrance point was not permitted by the DOT. So basically reducing signage, not because we want to frankly, but because we have to by a third. So these were, these will be it. The, this is a monument sign and this is, is a height sign. There's also an issue of height. Of making sure that there's visibility to see under the sign as well as people come and go.
I understand that. That's my issue with it.
Yeah. Fair question.
Yes, I have a question. So are you, you saying that the taller one is, is visible from
the highway.
Highway, not that course, you don't, that's not the target. Is well, but this middle sign would be.
This is really for pass by traffic like right on the street because that's a monument sign. It's much lower.
Right.
No one obviously would see that from the highway. The other nice thing about a higher sign in that location is you know, is a safety issue, just alerting people that might need to stop for gas going along the highway that there is somewhere to stop. That's another reason why the height is important. I know when I travel at night for meetings like this, I look for that off a highway where I can see that something's lit up. There's people around. It tends to be late at night. So that, that's important to me. So we just want to make sure that people are able to see the sign and then when they come down the ramp, they're able to see where to go.
Well, with all due respect, if you're coming down 81 south, you could see the signs for gas at exit. I don't know if they've renamed exit five, but and then you'd also see as you head 81 north or even stay south. For the truck stops.
This is on 363.
It's across from that billboard right next to the ambulance.
It's like three blocks from the
Right. I mean, I drove by the, I drove by. So I guess my question was, what highway are you trying to attract people?
363. Believe. It's quite a distance.
The over one.
Okay, but it's, so it's not particularly close, but it's
It's up there. Yeah. It's high. And it's elevated.
Okay.
Yeah, 363 is pretty elevated right around there.
Approximately 25 feet.
Now is 40 feet the top of the, the can? What's the lowest you could live with?
Go to 35 because again, it's more of a visibility standpoint.
Right.
Not that I want to put it that high.
What is, what does the bottom of the sign come to right now? The, the, there's two poles and then it's open in the middle. I'm assuming.
To the bottom.
20 and a half feet to the bottom.
Okay. And the, the building's a one story, right? Yes, so roughly 12, 15 feet.
21 feet.
21 feet. Can kind of see your point there. Any other questions related to the, the height of the sign and the size of the sign?
And then in terms of just the other of the other variances, the interior landscaped islands are, are always a problem for service stations. Because that they need to be plowed so often for easy access. And what will happen is what happens all the time is the plow will hit it, they'll hit the curb. It, it just causes a lot of problem, even in the fall, it causes a problem because the, if there's a tree planted in it, the leaves fall on the cars, people are unhappy with that. I mean, the best example of that, and I know you've heard me say this before, is your parking lot across the street that the city constructed in which there are no internal landscape islands. It, it just is a maintenance issue. For anyone.
Can I go back to the sign? Where on the, where on the property is that pole sign going to go? The northwest.
Sorry, going back to the site plan too. And just, and just add one other thing on the landscape violence. I mean, we have a block of seven here, a block of five here. There's 12 in the front. And then there's 13 on the side. So in reality, you're not going to put a landscape island at seven parking spaces here or in five. Even 13 to me is tight typically in most of my developments. If we had to do one, because we do hotels as well, it's normally every 15 spaces and then you put it, and you put a landscape island in, you know, we try, I think we did a good job with landscaping the perimeter to shield for headlights and provide adequate landscaping on the exterior to make the site a lot better. But going back to your other question, Mr. Chair, the, the 40 foot pylon is being proposed is at the main entrance on Liberty. So here's, this is, this is court. This is Liberty. And we propose that one here.
Thank you very much. Any other questions about any of the requests for variance?
Good question. What's the highest sign right now in the city of Bampton? Can you tell us?
We don't, we could find that answer for you, but I do not know. The, the numero 33 South Washington. I can take a look and see. The one at 33 South Washington Street is 24 feet. Yeah. But the high, what's that? Yeah. I mean, I could live with 30 feet, but I just think 40 feet is just too high. We're going to run into problems. I'm going to tell you that right now in the city. People are going to say they've got a loud one at 40 feet. And you're going to have that issue.
Yeah. Okay, any other things you'd like us to know about before we start discussing further?
Could you give us one minute?
Sure. Thanks. Absolutely. Yeah, I would too, if we can.
What the max one paid out there. I mean, if you count the security, means all that's on the building.
Right.
That's
Like I'm thinking like there's a speedway on Main Street. Across from like the Masonic Temple.
That one's only 22 feet.
Okay, that's, so I need reference for that.
That was 22. The billboards are higher, yes. I mean, if you want to count the billboards, they're up there. Right. Right.
Yep.
I know the billboard over on Broadway Avenue is 80 feet. My crane reaches the bottom of that.
But those are billboards.
Yes. Could I just ask some, everybody to speak into the microphone for silent sake?
Good battery.
So I do think that we need as a point of reference to be able to know what this, what the highest sign is currently in the city before we could go forward in this.
I'm pretty sure that we've come to the conclusion that nothing's over 25 feet for a sign of this sort. Not, there's been no request for a variance unless it was built without, without the request. It wouldn't have happened in the last 15 years, I'm sure. Yeah. Right.
By, by definition, is a billboard in this sign different?
I don't know. The billboards have had to get height variances before, if that answers your question.
Like, like the ones on the other side of 363?
They are also ready to get city council approval.
Same area has.
Working out some technical difficulties.
Is this an illuminated sign?
Yes, it is. Internally. I think just trying to do math too, because again, I'm sort of shooting from the hip because I'm not the owner, I'm the owner's rep. So I have to make certain decisions on the fly when you guys are discussing. Based upon the elevation of the elevated highway. And the overall height of the sign. Would it, I, I think I would say minimum would be 34 feet to the top of the sign. Would be, I think again, acceptable from a standpoint of us trying to visualize what's going to work for us from a, from a visibility standpoint. And again, it's not a cheap sign. It's not like we're trying to buy something that's cheap. So I don't want to invest in something and then it doesn't work either. So I, I think 34 feet and that would put the bottom of the sign at 12. Which gives clearance underneath for any cars or trucks that need visibility to come in and out of the site.
Okay, well, thank you. This is something to discuss. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That could work.
Any other questions?
I'm just looking at the landscape islands. I'm fine with those too.
And furthermore, we're, we're updating the landscaping as well, based on the planning commission approval because we revised those entry points from the original submission. Tito's aware of this as well. So we're working with engineering to upgrade even more landscaping around the perimeter as well, just so you guys know, in the front entrance of Court Street.
All right, thank you. We're going to attempt to move on to the next section of this review. And let me, let me just check some paperwork here. I don't have to do anything with a secret on those, do I? I do. There's not Oh, it's okay. I would, there is a checklist. Yes, there is. Thank you very much. Planning didn't do that, did they? They're going to leave us to that. Get a little twisted around here. Okay. I'd like to make a couple of motions.
I make motions first and show up in the public.
Okay. All right. Little housekeeping here. I would like to make a motion that zoning board of appeals is going to thank you. It's been a long time, man. It's going to lead agency regarding seeker as this is an unlisted action. There's a few items we'll have to go through. Can I get a second for that? Motion, all in favor?
Hi.
And then I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for 265 Court Street and 28 Liberty Street. Can I get a second?
Second.
All, all in favor? Again, all of you. And I would sorry, I think a little feedback. I would like to ask any present wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed variances, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. I'm assuming the rest of you are here for other ones. Okay. Did we get any letters, emails, calls?
Not specific to the variance.
Okay, I would like to not, to get feedback from the 239. And it was a rather lengthy response from the county. A lot of it didn't have to do specifically with our part of it. They said, here, I'll just read a little excerpt. We don't have comments on the area variances alone. We feel area variances are tied to the feasibility of the site plan, et cetera, et cetera. And then they went into some further details that probably pertain more to the planning department. So I'll just note that we received this and it's part of the, part of the record. Again, one last time, anybody wishing to speak in favor or against proposed variance, please step forward. All right, then seeing no one, I would move to close the public hearing for 265 and 28 Liberty Street. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Now we Yep. Now regarding that seeker motion that I made, I'm going to quickly go through the seeker. And the staff. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's just cutting in and out a lot.
Sorry about that. Okay, so this is an unlisted action and I'll go right through it. The staff leaves us a few blanks, so we have to consider those specifically. Was proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? We have to decide whether it's no impact or small impact or a moderate to large impact. So granting of this, these variances, would that be a, a small or a moderate to large impact? I would say the granting of these variances would be a small impact.
I agree.
Okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? I would say no. Will the proposed act, and if I say something you guys don't agree with, pipe right up. That's, that's fine. Will proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community?
No.
In, in a small way, maybe. Well, we're, we're determining whether it's a small impact based on these medium, medium's not really one of our one of our criteria. We're looking at node to small or moderate to large. Medium is kind of gray. Well, when you get into moderate, if we, if, and there's nothing wrong with doing this, if we say moderate, that invokes a bunch of other things we have to consider, doesn't, doesn't it?
If you have a lot of moderate to large impacts, then that, then you would be leaning towards issuing a positive declaration under seeker, which, which goes down another path. You could find that to be
We can do. I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing that. I would just, I would argue myself that it's a mod, you know, a, not a moderate, as, as a small impact. And we've granted that a number of times before the area.
50 square feet is awful small for a sign.
50 square feet is very small.
And plus he's got, it's a tenant sign, it'd be on top of that. So yeah, I mean, he's got small panels for each one. They're not really that large. It just makes a sign.
In, in my mind, if you're, if you're looking at them as a whole, the pole sign would be, would be the closest to a moderate to me or the landscape stuff. But I'm, I'm, I'm still more in the small. And if you don't agree, that's fine. You can, okay. It, it does, but I can note that one, we, we can make sure that it's recorded that it was four to, four to one. Does that sound right? Saying it's small rather than moderate. Can I do that? Okay. I think he's listening to me up there. Thank you. Moving along here, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that create, that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? I do not think so. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? It should not affect things of that nature. It may increase that traffic marginally, but I'd say it'd be a small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably, reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I don't see that as a problem. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public private wastewater treatment utilities? Should be very small impact there. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And I would say no again. Having gone through this, I would move that we have a negative declaration for seeker. Can I get a second? I got a second over here. All in favor? I, that's unanimous. All right. Now we can get on to the criteria, I believe. Okay. We'll have, we'll probably have to go item by item with these and it's to remind everybody is, does the change lead to an undesirable, undesirable change to the neighborhood? Is there a reasonable alternative? Is it a substantial request? Is there an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in itself created? So starting with let's start with the pole sign. The square footage. Okay. Is it an undesirable change to allow the increase to 312 square feet versus 50 square feet?
I don't believe so as far as that goes. And, and the reason why I say that, like I said, it's a tenant panel sign. You've got different tenants that are going on the thing.
Three.
Circle K and then you've got Wendy's and then you've got the sub place.
And it includes the gas pricing.
And the gas prices are signed, yes.
I don't see an issue. It's a pretty good sized number. But I also think it's representative of other signage in the city.
Yeah, for gas station signs, yes.
Right. Pretty representative in overall size of some service stations.
Yeah, the, the sign that, that you referenced earlier at 33 South Washington, that needed a variance for maximum sign area.
Okay. Any, any reservations there on the size? Okay, the, the height.
That's where I'm a reservation.
I believe everybody has some reservations there.
I don't agree with the
40 seems awfully high. And granted, I do understand for the Seems awfully high. And granted, I do understand, uh, for the for the traffic that they're looking to catch the attention of, they're twenty feet off the ground. Twenty plus feet off the ground. And they're, you know, like, like moths, they're drawn to the nice video billboard on the right. Um, but forty feet seems like a lot. And it's, it, I, I I'm hesitant. I can understand where it might be the best for the visibility of the, of the place, but, uh, I'd be willing to discuss the potential for, uh, thinking about thirty-four feet. How do people feel about that?
It's nine feet higher. Yeah, I can, I could live with thirty-four. I mean, but, and I don't think the average person had noticed it. Besides the highway use, and I really don't think they're going to see it off there, but even at forty feet. You gotta be paying attention to it. You gotta know what's over there.
Yeah. How do you guys feel about that? Here, you need to speak.
I'm open to a reduction to thirty-four feet, but I would like to know the number of the highest sign in the city before we proceed to a decision because we establishing precedent here.
I'm pretty sure that we've come to the decision or the consensus that it is twenty-five feet is the highest. And even the. I don't think it would do any better than Greg's input or Tito's input at this point.
And I know even the Maravito signs, the highest there is twenty-five.
No, I'm, I'm not. Since this is kind of a unique situation and that was part of the discussion that, uh, in, involved in the response from the county, uh, to, to look at the uniqueness of this property. Um, it is unique and I don't think that just flat out granting any height variance here is necessarily setting precedent. It's tied to that property and its specific, um, uniqueness. Sure, people could look at it and say you've granted this, but we would have an explanation for why.
I don't, why do you think it's unique? That's another station going in.
Because most, most gas stations in the city are looking for ground level traffic. They're, they're shooting for the people that are driving by. In this case, they're looking for flyovers that are going down three sixty-three headed towards downtown. The other.
I, I agree there. I think the traffic that would be coming in is coming off the highway into the city. Everybody in the city knows it's there.
Yeah.
So they're trying to get a signs to know, you know, you could get off there for that. I think it is unique because of the elevated highway there.
Yeah.
There's technically only one exit off from that highway for that.
Right. Until you get over.
Unless you're coming across Riverside Drive and going down that way.
And you have to decide.
But that's not a highway part.
Right. So if the sign doesn't really catch their attention, they're not getting that, no business. And, and it's competing with the, the billboards. I mean, when you're on the highway, that's what you see at that level.
You barely see the streetlights from the, from the street.
Right. No, they're right down at like street level. Yeah, below street level. Do we know how high the, the billboards are? There's that one electronic.
Yeah, the small electronic one.
Yeah.
I think that was sixty feet.
That's what I thought. I thought they're, they're higher than.
Forty.
That's definitely higher than forty.
Yeah.
That's to the top of it. Like I said, when I was on council, that's when that one dared to come in front of us for that.
Okay. Yeah.
Might be a little higher, but I think it's sixty.
Personally, I understand the need for the sign. And I, I think it is.
Well, I understand the need for the sign. It's just the height. If we start this, what's going to happen down the road? That's what I'm concerned with.
I agree with John. I think it is setting a precedence. Because what about the next one that comes?
It, it is, it is extending the envelope a bit. Um, which I don't necessarily think is a bad idea. But when you're saying that it's because of this unique situation of your audience being, starting twenty-something feet in the air uh, versus on, on Main Street where you have gas stations where all you have is people going down a straight line with a sign right beside you. And there's no need for them to be higher in the city. In this, in this location, it is.
Is there signage to alert prior to that exit or even seeing the sign that there is a gas station that will be?
If you're talking about signs from Route eighty-one, I don't know what their.
State highways?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't know. I, I'd never really looked to see.
Attention. And I feel like by the time you've reached a certain point, you've already kind of decided, oh, I'm going to take that exit. Yeah, you're not. You know, veering over three lanes to get.
You haven't seen people on the roads here lately, have you? People, people are bad around here. I know, I, I, I think we have a kind of a split opinion of this at this point. I'm, I'm moral, I'm, I'm okay with the thirty-four.
I don't, I'm fine with the thirty-four.
And you guys are still not with, with the concept of just doing it in general or this one in particular? Cause I, my, my point of view is that it, this discussion has to do with this request in particular. Not with any kind of precedent setting. Yes, it will, it may be cited by applicants, then they could. But we would know what, what our reasoning was.
I just think, I just think forty feet's too high for.
Forty feet seems too high.
That's
line in the sand.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on. Let's, uh, regarding the pole sign, uh, ta, 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 ta. Do we need, let's see, we got the undesirable. Is there a reasonable alternative? We talked about it. This is, we're discussing an alternative. We have to determine, is it reasonable? Is it a substantial request? I think we all kind of agree that it is relatively substantial. Uh, I don't think it causes an adverse impact to the environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And yes, it was self-created. How about the interior landscape island? How do you? No problem, any discussion?
No problems with that.
It's in this area, I mean, it was pointed out, the landscaping was, some of it was moved to the perimeter of the parking lots, and I think that makes a lot more sense in, in some places. Um, so going through the criteria, there isn't an undesirable change to grant this variance. I don't think so. Is there a reasonable alternative? I think they've addressed the reasonable alternative and ways to accomplish landscaping. Is it substantial? In the scope of this project, I don't think it's overly substantial. Is it an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? I don't think so. And it's self-created. Sure. Parking areas between a principal building and public right of way. That was one of the other things that, um, where the applicant noted the blocks of spaces and they're not being gaps or whatever. I don't know how to state it properly, but do you guys have any problem with that? It also has to do with the layout of the parking area and the, uh, public access to the facility. Anything, John?
No, I, I don't. I don't see.
I think it's the best layout.
Yeah.
For that area that I have no.
It seems like a pretty efficient use of the space.
Yeah.
Uh, without.
Tree lining around it. Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't believe it makes an undesirable change to grant that, uh, variance, uh, the reasonable alternative. If you started doing things, you're cutting your part, you're going to lose your parking really fast. And with three businesses trying to operate out of this relatively small footprint, is it a substantial request? I really don't think so. Does it have a worse impact on the physical environmental conditions? No. And yes, it was self-created. John, you ready to state some, uh, motions for us?
Sure.
I'd like to, unless we have anything further.
Just wanted to kind of answer your question, the, uh, I don't know what the highest non-billboard sign is, but I just found a recent example of a billboard, which is the electronic one that's on the other side of three sixty-three at two forty-nine Court Street, and that's fifty-two feet high overall.
So I was close to sixty, yes. Yeah.
Yeah. A little. It's pretty big.
Okay, well, let's see. Do we want to make a motion for separate or the whole?
For each, all the forties, probably separate.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the three hundred and twelve square feet for the maximum sign area from fifty square feet.
Could I have a second? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous regarding the pole sign size.
I'd like to make a motion for the maximum height to the top of the sign that's normally twenty-five foot in grade to thirty-four feet in height instead of forty.
Can I get a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's, okay, so it's three, three in favor of, two opposed.
Then I'd like to make a motion for the interior landscaping islands where it's supposed to be one nine by eighteen island required for every ten parking spaces to zero.
Could I have a second, please? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. And.
Or the parking areas between principal building and the public right of way, which is not permitted, they would like to have seven spaces for parking. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Could I have a second, please? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck moving forward.
Thank you everyone for your time. Appreciate it. Looking forward to coming to Big Anton.
Okay, and if, if for some reason the applicant has any issues with you're shooting from the hip, get back in touch with planning and they'll be happy to help you.
Thanks again. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, case number two for the evening is James Santoni, fifty-nine Blackstone Ave, carry variance for zero foot setback for residential shed where five feet is a minimum required in the R one single unit district. You gotta pull one of those close to you, make sure the green button's on.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, all right, great. Thanks for having me here. Uh, my name's Jim Santoni, fifty-nine Blackstone Ave.
Hi, Joe.
Uh, I moved into that house back in nineteen sixty. My dad built it. I was one of four boys. And, uh, uh, I think I was about nine years old when we poured the concrete foundation for the.
Think you need to pull it just a little closer.
I was about nine years old, I think, when we poured this, uh, eight foot by eight foot um, foundation for the shed. Anyway, uh, nineteen eighty, I moved away, came back during COVID, kind of be caretaker for my mom and dad until they passed, uh, one of four boys. And I ended up buying the house from my, uh, my brothers. Okay, and, uh, so anyway, uh, the shed was in pretty bad shape. Uh, it was metal with, um, uh, framing on the inside. So it was falling apart, looked ugly. Just took it down, right? And, uh, uh, I made my neighbor aware of what I was going to do. He didn't have a problem. Uh, but anyway, uh, somebody had a problem with it and so got, got your letter. And, uh, uh, and the planning people were kind enough to give me eighteen dwellings that were within two hundred feet. Puffing. Okay. And I got, I went around to every one of those neighbors and I wrote a letter and some even wrote their own. I have two lawyers next to me on my, as you look at the house, the left-hand side, Tina Fernandez, she decided to write her own letter. Uh, but, uh, seventeen out of the eighteen said no objection to the shed. So, um, uh, anyway, I just replaced what was existing there. It was like, you know, maybe eight by eight, so I went a little bit bigger. Okay, just kind of levered over the concrete foundation. And this is a picture of what it looks like from my neighbor's side. He had an, he had a shed that was like twelve by eighteen, sixteen, twenty, I don't know. It was, it was plastic, so he could able to move it, but now he likes it even better because my shed gives him a little bit of privacy. Looks nice, you know? Um, that kind of thing. Uh, it's all stick, stick built, two by six, right? Vinyl siding, got a garage on the front, you know? So I could park my ATV in there. There, there's another little picture of the back, his backyard. And, um, let's see here. Uh, that's the front of the shed with the garage. Uh, that's another little picture of it. Okay. So, uh, you know, back probably in the early sixties, there were no variances. In fact, that neighborhood, if you took that block, there's five homes that have sheds on Zoro property. In fact, my neighbor directly behind me. Right there. So I mean, it wasn't a big deal then. It doesn't seem to be a big deal now since everybody kind of signed off on it. So I'm here to request that, uh, there aren't any objections, that it stay as is.
Um, okay. Well, thank you for coming and thank you for, uh, the way you've addressed this. Uh, you've answered a lot of the questions that I, that I had coming in. Uh, it seems like your neighbor who's, whose property is closest to it has no problem with it.
No, uh, Ricky Rout does not. Uh, my neighbors, there's two lawyers on the other side of me. Tina Fernandez, she wrote her own letter.
Yeah.
I brought a couple of my neighbors that live directly across the street from me. Um, one had to leave unfortunately, but, uh,
I got long-winded on the first one. What can I say?
Yeah, yeah. She had a graduation party to go to, uh, or event.
Do you guys, I, I'm not to belabor this anymore. Do you guys have any questions for the applicant?
No, did you just build this yourself?
No.
Or did you have somebody?
Well, yeah, I clean up.
Okay. No, I mean, it's very nice. It's very nice. That's why I wanted to know.
That's considered building.
Very well done.
You know, just helping out.
Any other questions? Okay. I don't have any more questions. Um, thank you for printing out the pictures. I was having trouble, uh, printing them from the email. It wouldn't let me back in.
I'll leave them with, uh, you, with Tito.
You can keep them. You, you can keep them.
Oh, you can keep them?
We, we. I, I just, I was just having technical difficulty.
You got all the letters that I sent in and everything else? Okay, great. Great. Thank you.
We are all set to move to the next step.
Tito, do you want this sign I brought back? Take it there. I'll, I'll leave it right there. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I would like to, uh, make a motion to open the public hearing. Um, like a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then anybody with, present wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed variance, please step forward. Come on down.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi.
Uh, pleasure to be here. My name is David Hoflein and I am the neighbor that lives at sixty Blackstone across the street. And I came to, uh, just testify on behalf of my neighbor that a shed is not a problem from our, our side of the street. And we're in support of, of the variance.
Okay, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are you here for this one? Nope. Okay, then seeing no one else, and we do, I would note that we have a bunch of letters from neighbors seventeen out of eighteen in favor of the variance. One, what was the reservation of the one who, who was not? Just didn't like it?
Uh, I wasn't told that. I think the email just said like seventeen of eighteen. They weren't, unable to reach the, uh, the eighteenth person, so.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I, I think we've got everything we need here. Um, okay, then I would like to move to close the public hearing for fifty-nine Blackstone. Can I get a second? I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there there are no wait. This is, I would, uh, note that this is a type two action for a type two action, which is, does not require seeker? Do I need a motion on that or just? All right. Rusty, what can I say here? So now we can go through the criteria and deliberate. Uh, again, same criteria. Undesirable change, reasonable alternative, substantial request, adverse impact and self recreated. Is it an undesirable change to grant this variance? I don't believe so. It was. I don't believe so, it was pre-existing in that exact location, maybe a few inches one way or the other? Is there a reasonable alternative?
Yeah.
Not really, I mean, there's the existing pad.
It was, it was there originally.
Yeah, it's, it's to the home. Is it, I would also note. No, I'll do that later, substantial request, five feet versus zero? I don't think so, and there's a lot of them. Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with the area. So a few of us are pretty nearby there, um, is it an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No, it's a very nice looking shed. Congrats, uh, self-created. Yeah. But it was pre-existing, you know, and it's well within the size limitations, the only thing is it's a shade. Too close by current look, by current zoning, uh, probably old zoning when it was built, it was acceptable. Yeah. Okay, so John, would you like to make a motion for us?
Yeah, I'd like to make, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to approve an area variance for a zero setback for residential. Shed at fifty-nine Blackstone Avenue where five foot. Minimum requirement in an R one single unit dwelling district.
Thank you, can I get a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, thank you very much, good luck going forward. And our final case of the evening. I apologize for the pronunciation, I'm gonna. Uh, Ball want as here, seventy-four Tompkins Street, a use variance for the construction of a mixed-use. Development with a ground floor retail food, sir, sales business and three studio apartments on the upper story. Where no more than two dwelling units are allowed and no commercial use is permitted in the R two residential one and two unit dwelling district. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lloyd, I am the design consultant for Mr. Bellwant, he is the owner of seventy-four Tompkins. Uh, so I can be here last week, uh, but I'm here now speaking plan. Uh, I, I, I guess he has some problem last week at the planning site meeting, so I'm here to help to clarify some of the. Uh, question that you might have for the project. Uh, but again, we are here for seventy-four Tompkins. Uh, the site is currently an R two residential. Uh, we are asking for a variance for the project. To turn us, to turn us into a mixed-use building. Uh, first four will be a commercial store and there's three unit above the uh, store. To, to add on some comment from last week. So we added a few more parking space in the back. Uh, there's three more. We, we added a drywall, that was one of the, the comment from the chairman. And uh, we moved the dumpster. Uh, also, toward the street, uh, on Hall Street in the back. Um, the retaining wall on the left side of the property, we do not own that. Uh, uh, retaining wall, so uh, as, as, as part of this project, we'd be happy to um. Make it more, make it better, uh, in a way to fit in with, with our project. But uh, just to clarify that we do not own that retaining wall on the left side of the uh. Property. Other than that, that's all we have for you today, uh, we would like to open up for any question that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, members of the board, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do.
Yep.
You're next to the liquor store, correct?
That is.
That's on Tompkins Street?
Yep, the liquor store, seventy-two Tompkins Street.
Right, now, what's happening with the house in between there?
We would like to demolish that house, uh, it is in a very uh, uh, deteriorated condition.
Okay.
We would like to get a permit to uh, tear down as soon as possible.
Okay. I think what you've done over there so far is really cleaned up the neighborhood, I like it, I live around the corner from there, so. Think you've done a fine job over there.
Thank you. Alright, thanks, thanks, Mr.
That was my concern with the house was in the middle, okay.
Uh. We have been, he has been cleaning up quite a bit this past few, few months. Uh, there's, there's a shed there too, on, on the property right now, and I think that is gonna go away very soon. And he's been cutting down some trees and uh, cleaning up a lot, uh, he has uh, redone the sidewalk uh, late last year as well. Uh, the whole entire sidewalk there, I'm fun of seventy-two at seventy-four.
Yep.
And uh, I think he's cleaning up.
No, it's really looking nice over there.
Thank you.
I just have one question about.
Yes.
What's the square footage of the units on the second floor?
So the first floor is roughly uh, twenty-seven square feet. The second floor is uh, one thousand sixty-two, it's, it's, it's eleven hundred square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
So what about the parking then for the tenants on the second floor?
So, so originally, we had eight parking spaces in the front of the store, um, which is. And enough for both the commercial and the second floor, but now we added three more in the back. And they could come in from Hall Street in the back and each, each parking will be one for each unit up on top.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, I have no more questions.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you, stick around, we may have some questions as we go forward, but uh. Have a little more work to do on this, um. So I, I guess at this point I would uh, make a motion to open the public hearing for. Seventy-four. Tompkins Street, so if you guys could take a seat right over there, that'd be great. Can I get a second on the motion to open the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed project, come on up, state your name and address for the record. Tell us all about how you're feeling about this.
I'm Timothy Shores, can you hear me?
Yep, well, make sure you get, you have to get a pretty darn close, there you go.
Good enough? Yep, okay.
He's not, he's not making motions, I mean, we're good.
Timothy Shores, I'm at forty-three Tompkins Street.
Uh huh.
Um, I'm sorry, we didn't have much information about this, the notification went up on the building Friday afternoon. So I had no idea they were talking about tearing the building down. Uh, we thought they were going to rebuild the second floor into a three apartment, studio apartments on the second floor, but. Eight hundred and thirty-five foot. Square foot floor, uh, I know they put a lot of money into this building. But we're concerned about the development of the neighborhood. Uh, we thought they were going to put. Housing on the second floor. Three apartments, we have apartments at. Forty-eight Tompkins Street, which was subdivided illegally. We went to code, told them to stop. Nobody would code would come by. Uh, until a tenant complained about exposed wiring in their bathroom. Code went and told them to re, retake that subdivision out. We've had people at fifty-two Tompkins Street come and ask for a variance so they could put a third floor apartment in. Uh, we asked them not to do that, they were seeking approval for a variance. And that was stopped, right now we have a uh, air conditioner. Uh, in an attic window at forty-seven Tompkins Street. So the. Propensity for people to misuse the code. And put in housing in other locations illegally, we're trying to stop that. Uh, currently, I'm, we're looking at this, wondering how we're gonna have eight parking spaces for the tenants? Is that what I hear?
Um, it looks like uh, eight total for the mini mart combination with three dedicated back, did you see this?
No.
It's a, it's a pretty.
I know they put a lot of money to the sidewalk, the door looks great, but we didn't need a liquor store. And I don't know how successful that business is doing right now. This is gonna be seventy-two, that's seventy-four.
What's that? Yeah, that's what I'm assuming, yes. Really cleaned it up. An old uh, grocery store years ago.
So I, I've, finally seen this and uh, it's something different than what we had anticipated and were aware of happen. Is each apartment going to have its own?
If the apartments are spelled out in the upper left.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have their own bathrooms.
Each one has its own bathroom, I believe.
And. Um, is it two bedrooms per apartment?
It's a studio apartment, correct? So is that one bedroom? One bedroom.
Okay.
And you get a uh, kind of small um, look at what the front elevation looks like in the.
Yes.
On the left side.
Yeah. Well, I wish we'd known this, like I said, uh, the sign went up Friday afternoon. That's how we got notification, I know my wife went back through the public notices and found something from the first. Of June, which was in the paper for the notification. Is it possible that we can have this opportunity to talk to the neighbors in that area to see if they're. Have more to say about this?
Well, theoretically, we've gone through the posting, which.
But posting, it's not seven days.
There is an opportunity. Uh, so the planning is there now?
He, the, yes, they do have to go back to the planning commission for the site plan, um, the. The uses being proposed, which are the three studios and a convenience store would be decided by the zoning board. It's up to the zoning board whether or not you wanna table this and leave the, the public hearing open. Totally up to the board.
When, when were things posted, do we? Do we physically know when?
Yeah, we have records of when things are sent out and posted, it, it appeared in the paper, June first, you said?
June first.
Yeah, it's gotta be seven, it's gotta be seven days before the meeting, so we, we, we met the deadlines.
Okay.
But the. Posting a sign wasn't visible until the afternoon. On uh, Friday. Which means three days where, that's all we had to, to notice, notice this, and as I said, I had no idea they were tearing the building.
Right.
None of us do.
We, we can.
Can you verify what day that, that sign was physically posted?
Looking into it.
As I said, my wife was the data collector for the assessor's office, so she pays close attention to the legal notifications. Didn't see it Sunday's paper, has gone back, told me on the phone, she found it June first. And of course, we weren't looking for it until we saw the sign Friday night when we were going for dinner.
Right. By all means, I mean, if it's, if the time wasn't, they've been with.
When you say it wasn't visible?
Oh, it wasn't posted. It was on the door now, it wasn't earlier.
Um, I posted the.
Picture of it and that's.
A voice from above is.
I posted the sign myself, it was on the railing of the existing house. So unless it was removed or altered, that I cannot sign off on, but I posted the sign for the zoning board. On that property myself, it was, it was in time, it was like a week before the meeting is supposed to take place, so. That was posted on time, so unless it was altered in any way that I cannot guarantee.
And uh, I'll tell you, I drive the street every day, two or three times. And my wife pays close attention to this, she went up and took a picture of it. And it wasn't visible, it wasn't posted until Friday evening. We saw it on our way out to dinner, I said it was eight thirty or so. It wasn't there during the day.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I take this home?
Sure, take that, go, go right ahead.
I'd like to show her what, what the intent was.
Okay.
You know, we're looking at. She's eight hundred and thirty-five square feet on the second floor. For three apartments, I, that sounded like you were turning it into a rooming house. Which we'd be totally against.
With the existing structure, it would have been, yes. Alright, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Um, anyone else present wishing to speak in favor or against the project?
I have a question for the owners.
Okay.
What day did you see the sign? So you have a picture that's, that's timestamp, dates, date stamped of what day it was posted on the. In the front of the house.
What does the date say on the picture? When he took the photo?
Okay, thank you. Did you wanna speak? Up, up there? No, he's just along for the ride, okay, um. Did we get any phone calls, any other letters on, on this application? Emails?
Did you get anything, Helen?
Uh, no, nothing other than.
Okay.
This gentleman.
Alright, thank you very much. And. At this point, I would move to. Now, I want to, I want to discuss it. Let's go through the seeker first before we close the. Um, I would like to uh. Make motion, this is a seeker unlisted action and uh. That uh, I won't move that uh, ZBA be a lead agency, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Um, so I have to go through the same kind of. Environmental stuff, there are some things left blank, as I've said before, for us to discuss. You know, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Uh, yes, to a small extent, I think. Uh, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Again, yes, but to a small extent. Um, will the proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community? Based on the project described and the. Documents presented, it should be somewhat of an improvement in some ways. Okay. Uh, so no to small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Um, no, will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or. Affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? It should increase traffic a little bit, but not to the extent they're looking at in this kind of definition here, so I would say small. Uh, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate? Reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, no. Will the proposed action im- impacting existing public or private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment utilities, no. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Um, I'd say small. Yeah. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies? Groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna, no. Will the proposed. Action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems, no. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And I would say no again. Having gone through there, I would uh, move that we have a negative declaration for seeker, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous. Alright, before we get into closing the public hearing, I'd like for us to discuss. The, the uh. The possibility that the notice was not seen in a timely fashion, that we may not have gotten feedback from the neighbors. And, and the time that we would like to have, how do you guys feel about that?
Well, it was posted on June second.
Okay, so it looks like the timing was met.
Is that proper time?
Kind of a minimal requirement. I mean, it is kind of a minimal requirement of a of a week, right? It appears, but I mean, it also appears like the neighbor. Didn't didn't see it clearly for a while. That seems kind of clear. How do, how do we feel about that?
I'll be honest with you, I saw it today for the first time, so and I don't live far from there.
Yeah. So. I I I wanna make sure we make the best decision possible, and. To the applicant, you you have a nice application there. I in fear, I like the theory of everything you're working towards. Uh, getting some pretty nasty property cleaned up and productive. But I also wanna make sure that we get the proper feedback from the community that we wanna get. I mean, we don't always get feedback. I mean, any feedback is good. To. What what to the applicant, what you're looking at a timeline here, you're you're wanting to move forward, I'm assuming, pretty quickly? Yeah. But you can't do any, you can't do anything at all until your next um planning board meeting, which is what next? Um, first Monday.
Right, they still have to um get site plan approval, and they'll, there there'll be a public hearing at that point on July first. So if this gets tabled. You would be delaying the project by by seven days.
Um, if I may notice, uh, they also will need to go to the card commission to for demolition permit for the house, so that's also. I I don't know where that timeline is going to be potentially next month for that as well, so.
Um, okay, I just wanna make sure we don't impact the applicant too badly, but I wanna make sure the neighbor gets a chance.
I mean, yeah, if I mean, if we can, if we do table it, then the other neighbors can get together and.
Yeah. Um, do you wanna discuss the use variance and uh? Before, before closing the, can we do that?
You can, or you can just table the the whole matter and then uh wait for the comments.
I'd like to feel, I'd like to get a feeling for how we feel about just the general concept. Of of this. Since it is a a use variance, which is kind of. Interesting always.
I think it might be better to just table it.
Just a table?
Feedback, see what they think, because they're on the ground, they're living in that area, if they're agreeable to.
Okay. I would also remind the applicant that there's some of the elements of the use variance I don't think you addressed. Um, the. The economic. Part of it. You have to, you have to. I I believe I'm right, aren't I? You have to prove that the current state of the building property doesn't return on your investment. Uh, and that that factors into your request for a use change. So any kind of. Evidence you have uh like. Marketing of the property or um perhaps um. The the viability of having uh, this is just, I guess, uh. You know, viability of rehabbing the existing property to the existing proper use. Just a discussion of things like that.
They they did provide some information in the application um about the costs, uh, the carrying cost of the property.
Okay.
And they state that they invested in this site. They they gave some information, but to your point, they could provide more.
I just wanna make sure we hit all the bases. If we're gonna, if we're gonna table this, I'd like to make sure we get all, everything buttoned up when the, when we next get together. Okay, so I think I know where we're going. Do I need, I don't close the public hearing, do I?
You you would leave the public hearing open and then make a motion to table. I just want to let the gentleman know that uh when a public hearing is left open. It does not get re-noticed, so people have an opportunity to comment, but they won't be receiving new mailers.
As I said.
Yeah, talk amongst your friends, neighbors.
The development of the property, the property matter, I can't see many of us complaining about.
Right. Right.
I think they've done a fine job of cleaning it. I mean, the the whole backyard was a disaster before. And really, he's cleaned up the property.
Yep. Absolutely.
Yes.
That's a commercial property and that wasn't for us.
Yeah.
Okay, didn't know what was going to be in this development.
That's why I asked him what they were gonna do with the house, and it's nice to see it being taken down, because that's, yes, it is.
All right, then I will make a motion that we leave the uh public hearing open or end table this. Uh, item on our agenda till next month's meeting. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you guys next month.
Yes, thank you.
You as well. Thank you very much. Do we know the date?
Well, I'm going on vacation.
It it'd be July eighth.
So guys, you, excuse me, excuse me, next meeting be July eighth. See y'all then. Thank you. That's correct. You just have to remember now. Okay, as long as we have three or four. Okay. Do we have any other business? You guys got any other business? No? And motion to adjourn, can I get a second? All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.